Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for May 7, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business, I'd like to ask everybody in the room to please turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. And for two weeks running, I will ask Trustee Myers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Item three, quorum. Rob, you want to check quorum, please?
Certainly. The exception of Mr. Myers, May 14 study session?
What's on the agenda?
Villa Joan Properties.
Okay.
Yeah, 93 Green Bay Road. All good there? May 21?
I will be out at ICSE.
Okay.
Vegas.
And then June 4. All good? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number four, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience can come up to the podium and share your thoughts with the village council on any items that are not on the agenda. Would anybody like to address the village council this evening? Come on up, Liz. You're up there enough, you should know by now.
Now I know. Okay. Hi, Liz Kunkel, 1303 Holly Lane. Just a few miscellaneous comments, items, that I all think share a common thread. First of all, I want to thank Trustee Myers for his service, past and future, because we know it's not ending. I want to thank trustee, future trustee Colodarchi for his service, also ongoing, and thank all of you, honestly. I wanted to be here to come say thanks. Scott.
You knew about the cake. That's what you, you're here.
I sadly can't, I can't.
You can admit it, that's okay.
Sorry. I can't stay. I literally had four different things originally planned tonight, two of them went away, but the next one relates to my post-high school counseling student stuff, so different world. But, so, I'll stay for as long as I can, thank you. A quick comment about the second item, a quick comment about the downtown master plan, which obviously is on the agenda for later, but it's a discreet item that's come up previously, and just something I thought about relating to the color and potential painting of the paired bins in the commercial districts. As you may know, when the Environmental Enforcement Commission presented the proposal years ago, like 2013 on that, the then council wanted the cans to be green. I believe it was called Winnetka Green. That was my recollection. So, they were all painted green. Our, the proposal's recommendation was to try to distinguish the cans in some way to help facilitate perception of them as collecting different items. And so, now I understand, I've heard just anecdotally from coming to a couple of previous meetings, that there's an idea to now paint both pairs of cans black. And for multiple reasons, I suggest you paint refuse cans black and leave the recycling cans green. It should cost less money, takes fewer resources, helps distinguish. It seems like a no-brainer. And it pairs, it actually meshes with what the Park District generally does with their big 55-gallon drums. Their, the refuse cans are black and the recycling ones are green. I also, thinking about that, in order to sort of do any additional distinguishing possible, think about different colored liners for bins, blue ones for recycling and black for landfill. Sorry. Again, similar vein, spring cleanup, big issue. It lets me think it a little bit. As I've said previously, our whole system is based on garbage. Our, our spring cleanup week sadly is also. We're very fortunate that Lake Shore Recycling Systems recycles as much as possible that it picks up, but I just love in general to be a little more intentional about our, about the whole process. And we've started asking people to recycle more, but just do a little bit more upfront before people are just putting everything out on their yards. I understand the safety issue, but I still feel like we can do it in a, in a more intentional way. And one piece of that is, if we can try not to do it over Earth Day Week, that would be great, because it's really hard to try to celebrate Earth Day Week when everybody's yards is covered with their refuse and waste that fortuitously, some of which is being recycled, but it's, it's a mixed message. Last point, real quick, I came across recently an item about Evanston, which does a really neat, I think, celebration of Earth Week, Earth Day, and Arbor Day, which typically are the end of, beginning and end of the same week. And they do this event called Cleanup Evanston, Cleanup, comma, Evanston. But it's a series of events all over the city of different cleanup sites, different kinds of ways to clean up the city. And I suggest we look at something similar in Winnetka as a way to celebrate. I'd love to mark the week more. As a citizen, I request that we look into that, and as a member of the EFC, I'd say I'd be happy looking to that. Thank you.
Sounds like the EFC is going to have a full agenda.
We got a lot going on, and thanks for letting me have a little extra time.
Sure. My pleasure. Thanks, Liz. Would anybody else like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move on to reports. Trustees, we'll start with Penny.
Yes, we are going to be postponing the, second Saturday will be the third Saturday trustee conversations this month at Pete's, just due to trustee availability. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott?
Nope, no report.
Bob?
No report.
Ann?
No, no report.
Andy?
No report.
And John?
Just want to say thanks to Holland Knight for hosting the legal municipal seminar at Ravinia last week. I think I learned a few things I didn't know, and it was informative. Thanks.
Okay, village attorney?
No report.
Village manager?
No report this evening.
And village president, I have no report. Okay, item number six, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will now ask the village clerk to read the consent agenda.
Approval of the village council meeting minutes for April 9, 2019 study session, April 16, 2019 regular meeting, and April 25, 2019 special meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated April 12 through May 2, 2019 in the amount of $1,730,845.64. Resolution numbers R-47 and R-48, 2019 establishing department head and manager salaries. Resolution number R-49, 2019 approving a contract with Wesco Distribution Incorporated for the purchase of secondary cable for adoption.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, item eight, ordinances and resolution. 8A, resolution number R-37, 2019, approving a banquet reception hall at 9:15 Green Bay Road, public hearing continuation. The applicant and owner of Boutique Bytes, Elena Vasquez, has asked the village for more time to finalize her plans for parking and noise control. Therefore, the public hearing on this matter is continued until the May 21 council meeting. Is there any action required?
If I could just, since this is my last chance to make a public comment on this?
Do it.
From, at least from up here, I would, I'm disappointed I don't have an opportunity to vote on this tonight. You know, I think this is a very innovative solution. I think if she can address the noise issues with the immediate neighbors, meaning on either side, I think that this is something that, you know, it's a, it's a solid business moving into, moving into a space that is quite large, and I think it's providing a very innovative solution there. So, I'm hoping that she comes back with a good solution and we can move this forward.
Me too. Thanks, Scott. Okay, ordinance number, 8B, ordinance number M4, 2019, 1309 Trap Lane Variation. This is up for introduction and possibly adoption, is that correct?
Correct.
This application for zoning variation was discussed at the April 4 council meeting, and the council directed staff to prepare an approval ordinance. Our Director of Community Development, David Schoen, is here to review this.
Again, you previously reviewed this application. As directed, we've prepared an ordinance to approve the front yard variation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we bring it up here, I'd like to open it up to the audience. Would anybody like to speak on this issue from the audience, 1309 Trap Lane? Seeing none, I'll bring it up here. First of all, does anybody have any questions or, for David? Okay, any comments or other, other thoughts on the item?
Nope.
You guys are too good. All right, may I have a motion to waive introduction of ordinance number M4, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now, may I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M4, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Is the applicant here, by the way?
Yep.
Oh. Good luck and have fun.
Let us know when we should be.
Let us know when the pool party is. Item 8C, ordinance number M5, 2019, 800 Pine Street, Winnetka Community Nursery School, special use permit and variations. This is up for introduction and possible, for possible adoption. The Winnetka Community Nursery School has applied for a special use permit and zoning variations to complete a playground renovation project. Here to review, again, is Community Development Director, David Schoen.
Yes, the school is requesting to make some changes to the playground in terms of equipment and surface. They have been before your three advisory bodies, each have unanimously recommended approval of the requested special use and the yard variations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for David. A quiet bunch tonight. Okay, are there any comments or questions on this item from the audience? Does anybody like to speak on 800 Pine?
I will.
No, you don't need to.
Run a roll. Could you at least introduce yourself so we know who you are? Now that you've re-edited yourself out.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Page, live at 1092 Cherry Street in Winnetka. I'm the board president, so I'm here on behalf of the board. We're just renovating our existing playground, updating some equipment that's old, and changing and adding a few new elements.
Great. Well, it looks like a great plan, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, any questions or comments from the gang up here?
No, it looks to me like it's, it's within the confines of what was done before, and in fact is a little, is a little more tightly controlled of the space, so, you know, looks like a good plan to me.
Yeah, it looks like a great refresh.
Wish I was a kid, that's all.
I'm sure they wouldn't stop you from going and. Any other comments, questions? Nope? Okay, may I have a motion, first off, to waive introduction of ordinance number M5, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number M5, 2019?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Motion carries, good luck. Thank you very much. All right, now here's one we're going to have a lot of conversation on. Sorry, Brad. Ordinance number M6, 2019, 1112 Willow Road, Crow Island School, special use permit and variations, and this is up for introduction, possible introduction, or, I'm sorry, introduction and possible adoption. This is another playground renovation project, this time at Crow Island School, and David's getting a workout tonight.
Yes, again, they're making renovations in terms of new surfaces, new playground equipment. They've been before your three advisory bodies, and they have each recommended unanimously approval of the special use and the required yard variations for the playground that's along Glendale Avenue. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for David. Done? All right, we'll open it up to the audience. Would anybody like to speak on, on this item? Come on up, Brad.
All right. Just looking to continue our refreshes of our playgrounds throughout the district, make sure they're safe and modern equipment, and also providing hopeful for surfaces for ADA accessibility for some of our students that have that need.
So you won't be bringing back the mongoose, then?
No.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
I would only, can I just make one point?
Well, sure.
I would only, someone's got to say something. I would only make the point that, for the record, I do appreciate the fact that all three advisory bodies reviewed these, and I appreciate the minutes of those meetings and getting the perspectives, even though it was all unanimous, I think that that is of value. So, thanks to all the advisory bodies on both, both of these playgrounds. They're terrific, and they went through the review process, and that's helpful. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Duly noted. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I would like to say, following on that, thank you for the thoughtful, because it is, that, that playground in particular is right in the neighborhood, of course, Kevin, you've lived there, so you know. And for, you know, the thoughtful color choices and stuff, because it does make a huge difference. It was funny, I was walking, well, I was walking through another playground yesterday, and, you know, the, the trend is towards having lots of colors, because kids need colors to be attracted to playground equipment, I don't know, anyway. And sometimes it's really, it's, you know, not visually attractive, so thank you for your sensitivity on that.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll first ask for a motion to waive introduction of ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to have a motion to adopt ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to have a motion to adopt ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to have a motion to adopt ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to have a motion to adopt ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I'd like to have a motion to adopt ordinance number M6, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Lanthir?
Yep.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Good luck. Okay, item nine, moving right along, very old business, 2019 Streetscape Project, 90% Plans and Bid Authorization. Tonight, after much hard work and planning, the village council has the chance to approve construction bidding for Phase 1 of the Downtown Streetscape and Signage Master Plan. Many public meetings have been held. Input from residents, building owners, and merchants have been vigorously solicited. Concerns have been heard by and taken into consideration. Now it is time to act by reviewing the 90% design plans and voting to finalize construction documents to solicit bids for the project. And tonight, oh, there he is. Steve is here to walk us through.
Jody.
Hmm?
And Jody.
Oh, and Jody. Is Jody back there, too?
Yeah, she's here.
Oh, there you are.
And Ciaran's here, too.
Oh, the whole gang's here. Sorry, guys.
So, you've, you've blown through 161 pages of your agenda in 24 minutes, and?
Now it's going to come to a squishy.
Yeah, this starts on page 162. Jody Mariano from Tescosocias has a brief presentation to sort of summarize the planning process that's taken place. A couple of things just to make note of in your agenda materials. I just wanted to point out that Sea Arbor Group has done a cost estimate for the project, and the estimated construction costs are within the $2,074,000 budget that the village has made. Obviously, we won't know the actual construction costs until we get bids back, but based on the, on the cost pricing, it looks like we'll be in good shape to, to proceed. Jody's presentation goes through some of the background of the planning process, and then some of the phasing information that we had developed and shared with the business owners, so, Jody, if you want to.
Great.
Hi, Jody.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us back. We're very excited that we're at this point now. I know that you're very familiar with this project, and you have a lot of materials in your packet, so we're here to give you a brief overview and then answer any questions that you may have. Just as President Rince mentioned, we've been through a long road together, and so a summary of the meetings that we've had are here on this slide. We've had a lot of great discussion and input, and we believe that we've had a great working relationship with staff and with Sea Arbor to put together the plans that you see tonight. So, just a quick overview as to what we're including in our Streetscape 90% package. These are similar to the color renderings that we all looked at together back in April. The scope of the project includes Chestnut Street from Elm to Spruce. It includes the section of Spruce from Elm, about a quarter of the block to the west, and it also includes the post office parking lot. The scope of the work at the post office parking lot is to resurface, restripe landscape and add signage to notify folks that there's public parking in this location, and to improve the perimeter landscaping as well as the interior landscaping. The scope of the work at the Chestnut and Elm Street intersection is to reconstruct the intersection, create the bumpouts that you see here that provide amenity spaces for things like benches and bike racks, planter pots, bollards, et cetera, tree plantings, and overhead festoon lighting. Along Chestnut Street, between Chestnut and Elm, between Spruce and Elm, rather, we've got a sidewalk with trees and tree grates. We've got new light poles and planter pots and a couple of areas for benches and clustered plantings at those bumpout areas. This is a close-up view of the post office parking lot that you saw from the last time. Again, we're not making major reconstructions to the parking lot, just freshening it up to make it more attractive. And then at the intersection, you can see on the, on the plans here where we've got clusters of benches, we've got existing trees to be preserved, like this big pear tree, other new trees and planters. The overhead festoon lights are shown in this rectangular pattern, also as this X pattern, and then other festoon lighting at the entryways to the streets. And so, this project really is setting the tone for the downtown Streetscape Plan to come. This is what we consider to be the Phase 1 of that whole Streetscape. Some of the images of the, the materials and products that are included in the 90% set include a signage plan, so on the left-hand side, this is the business directory kiosk. This is proposed to be located in front of Pete's Coffee, and this is a double-sided sign kiosk that has a lockable cabinet, so that the village can put events and postings on the inside of that sign. We've also got regulatory signs, and then we've got those parking identifier and parking a great comment. So we'd love to talk with staff about those also. Bollards, these would be located at the intersections to define the edge between where sidewalks are and where cars go. The detectable warning plates, these are for pedestrian access at the curb ramps. We have the bike racks that are bollards. Each rack will support two bicycles. On the bottom, the crosswalk and the intersection bump out paving, that's same as the brick pavers that we have today. The tree grates are shown beside that. This is a new tree grate pattern, something a little bit more decorative as compared to what we currently have in downtown. We've also incorporated precast concrete planters at the intersections, again, to demarcate that edge between sidewalk and roadway. We've also incorporated these two elements from the Park District at Dwyer Park, the drinking fountain, and also the masonry wall, which is a seat wall located at the corner of Chestnut and Elm near the parking lot. The intent of that was to provide space for more gathering, more people can sit in a wall than they can on a bench, so we've included that. The plant materials are shown here. Again, we welcome, you know, further discussions with staff and with the garden club. The plantings, of course, are the very last thing that gets installed, but the intent is to specify a native and salt tolerant plant list in keeping with the Village's sustainable mission. So that is a very brief overview of the plan, but we're happy to answer questions. Before we do, I'm going to turn it to Duane to talk about where we go from here.
Great, thanks, Jody.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Up on the slide here is the anticipated schedule. The announcement for the bid is going to occur on May 16th, with a bid opening in June, and construction's then going to begin in July after the sidewalk sale, and overall, the completion is anticipated to be in November of this year. And then since we gathered here last month, we also conducted an open house with businesses to discuss the construction phasing, and that's shown here. Basically, it's going to be divided into six construction phases, as you can see in the overview. Basically, the intent is to divide it up into enough segments that it would not take too long to do each segment, to minimize the impacts to businesses. Overall, as far as the construction phasing goes, it received a lot of positive comments. I know Kerry from Fred's was very happy. The, one of the predominant comments we got was the concerns about construction vehicles parking in front of businesses, taking away those spaces. And there's enough area within each phase for construction workers to park their vehicles, stay, store materials, things of that nature. And I know one of the business owners said that they have Jim Bernall's number on speed dial, so he'll hear it right away. So other than that, that was, like I said, the open house itself received very positive comments.
Sorry, just to interrupt. So are you saying, so the construction workers will have a parking location off-site, right, out of the downtown area?
The construction workers, as far as like construction vehicles, like the foreman's truck and vehicles making deliveries, materials of that nature, there's enough area within his zone for them to be able to drop materials off and that nature. If everybody drives a truck there, there's not going to be enough room, but that's going to have to be tempered. And the other thing, too, is with the brick pavers, they should only basically bring enough to the site that they can lay down in that quadrant that they're working in at the time. So with that, that concludes our presentation.
Great, well, thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead, Ian.
So just to thank you so much for listening to the businesses, and your schedule is really great, and I'm sure that they're really happy at Fred's. So thank you so much for your flexibility and sensitivity to their needs. Okay, so I have two materials question, one based on having been out and about, and in front of OUAB, Once Upon a Bagel, they were taking down a light. Steve's guys were out there sawing into this light, and because the base had rusted. And so my question is, how, what is our expectation on replacement of these lighting fixtures, and are we expecting them to rust again? You know, so that's number one. And the other was just a planting choice. I thought that hackberry was an invasive species, but I could be wrong about that. It's not, okay.
Hackberries are natives, and they also are great for street trees because they can handle assaults, but no, not invasive. I'll tell you, pears are invasive, and there's quite a few of those out there today, but not in hackberries. With regard to the light, I don't know about Oh, Once Upon a Bagel, but the street lights that are specified for this project all have a powder coated finish on them. The thing with the powder coated finish is that as soon as there's a littlest nick in there, it really is important to touch that up with the provided paint, because if that goes untouched, then that little nick, like anything, just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So these street lights shouldn't have that problem so long as that they're maintained properly. I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
I agree.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. We received a letter from a merchant talking about completion date on this, and she mentioned November 15th. I just want to make sure that either, I don't know how we got to the October 18th, did it move up, or was that just erroneous?
That was a letter from somebody who hasn't attended any of the meetings.
Okay, but I mean, so November 15th was not part of it.
So there was an opportunity to look back at the schedule and see if we could, if things go well, start right after the sidewalk sale and mobilize. And that would enable a construction completion, heavier construction by the 18th of October. However, there's punch list items that would take us to November 1st.
True, but we accommodated to the extent possible.
There was an attempt to try to squeeze it, but this is very tight.
I think that's great. Okay, that's great. Second question, this is really for Jody. I don't know, I may be the only person up here that has a question in my mind on this festoon lighting. And I wanted to just ask you, if festoon lighting was not part of this, do you have in your mind a good alternative to light that those areas, whether it's just with the poles, with the holiday decorative lighting on them, or, I mean, what are our choices if the festoon lighting went by the wayside?
Sure. So, let me pull this up. So there are lots of different types of light that are out there as part of the Streetscape plan. You know, for one thing, we absolutely have to have safe lighting on the road. So the 30-foot tall poles that are at the intersections, the vehicular lights on the left side of that frame, and then the pedestrian scale lights, those are a must. We have to have that. Beyond that, the festoon lights really are just that, they're just decorative. So they're not providing roadway safety lighting, they're providing ambiance. When we were meeting with the public and working with the task force during the downtown master plan and after, we provided a lot of imagery and photographs for people to react to. The festoon lighting were one of the things that when we went out to the public at the Easter egg hunt or at the ice rink, those were the items that people sort of, you know, chose their stickers and voted on those the most. And that's the reason that they, you know, kind of made their way into this recommendation for the plan. But I will say that they don't provide safety lighting, it's really just decorative lighting. If you wanted to provide, you know, alternatives to those things, you know, it's that light canopy that, you know, that they provide. There are other types of decorative light elements, like lighted bollards, for instance. We have unlit bollards, but lighted bollards would also provide some of that mood lighting.
So if you, I see it's going to be an alternative here, the festoon lighting on the bid. If you, I mean, are there other alternative ambiance lighting suggestions that you might want to bid as well, or not?
We could consider it. I mean, there's a lot of electrical engineering that goes along with those sorts of things, of course. And so, you know, we haven't talked about alternatives. I would think because bollards are part of this program, we could consider, for instance, a lit bollard instead of an unlit bollard. That would provide some of that kind of mood and emotion that people were looking for, but it would be a different feel, for sure.
I would say that one of the conversations during the master plan, and here again, I mean, people looked at it and said, oh, that looks nice. I mean, can we really envision it? You know, I think it's, most people maybe like me, they don't, they can't envision it. I gotta see it. I think the comment that, you know, as we talked in the meeting, was even if we don't have it up year round, it's great for holiday lighting, right? It does become something that, you know, between Thanksgiving and the end of the year, you can put up, you can have it up, you know, during all the winter months when it, you know, the sun sets earlier. Maybe it doesn't look as great, you know, in the summertime, but I think the idea was, it gives us some options.
To that point, because I think we talked about this at the last meeting, can you take that down?
You can, and I'm glad you asked, because I did want to circle back to that comment, because I know I, you know, I was able to respond, and I don't know if, anyways. So the light element, the pole that supports those festoon lights, is that very tall shaft pole with the pedestrian mount. It's this guy. So that's a lot of structure for something that may not be there all the time. And I guess I just want to point out that if the strings were removed, to think about what this would look like the rest of the year, and, you know, that it would be this, this pretty large element with the pedestrian light attached to it, but then you would, you know, I suppose if the strings were not always there, it would just look like we had these poles. We'd have this one that would be sitting by itself, and this one by itself. It's just a lot of structure if you're considering this not to be something that's permanent.
So one of the options here is if those taller festoon poles went away, the standard Sternbergs that you see there would be in their replacement. There's the option of replacing those poles, more so with the festival attachments that go along with that. That could be an enhancement as well, but the larger poles would go away. Without the festoon lights, just like a big telephone pole.
Jim, approximately how many Sternbergs would be replaced? It wouldn't be a one-for-one, but it would be the primary spaces, right?
So the larger ones in the intersection, which is one, two, three, four, the four larger ones without the Sternberg attachment piece, the light on it would go away. And then the taller ones with the attachment would just get replaced with a standard Sternberg. Those are the entrance gateway ones that have the three strings of the festoon lights.
And so that, I think, is total of 10. So we've got the intersection and...
Right. So overall, though, we would lose, if we, if they went away completely, we would lose four of the taller poles in the middle of the intersection. Everything else would get replaced with the standard Sternbergs.
Just piggybacking on this, I have seen them in Wabatosa, and I know Wabatosa has more than we would, than we would be using, but I frankly would propose a field trip if anybody would be interested. You know, it's like an hour away. I think it's really important that we see it in place because it is quite a visual impact, and, you know, I obviously have my own reaction, but I would really love for as many of us to see it before we make a decision.
So when's the best time to see that? During the day?
Well, I mean, you, well, but you want to see it during the day, because you want to see what it's going to look like when most people are there.
You go there, have dinner.
Yeah, no, I think it's really important that we see it both in the day and in the night, because the night is obviously what people are responding to, but it has a strong visual impact during the day as well, and that's really when most people are going to experience it. So.
That's right.
The other thing I would be interested in is to see the pictures that you all used when you went out to the public, just because it would be important for us to know what the public was responding to.
Sure, sure.
Well, I think the best thing, Jody, if you can get us a list of installations, maybe the manufacturer can point us to some that are local as well. I know there's some in Evanston that's not really comparable because it's over a plaza, rather.
Right. I mean, I think in this case, it would be festoon lighting over a roadway, and so I can share, Wabatosa is probably one of the closer ones. The other one that's not as close is over Mantino's Streetscape in downtown Mantino. They have a similar application.
Where's Mantino?
It's south, down 57. It's on the way to Kankakee. It's a little bit of a hike. Wabatosa really is the, probably the most applicable example because it goes over the roadway. It's a different scale than the other ones.
Yeah, there's actually, in the imagery that Jody has, in small, just above, that's Mantino. You can kind of see the zigzag across. That's where it covers the roadway.
What it does, I mean, we're 90% into this. I'm kind of surprised these comments are coming up. The public had great, like you said, the public had great input on those festoon lighting. We did talk one time that there aren't dimmers so that we can adjust the lighting at night. They're not to give any physical walking light. It's really for ambiance. Hey, this is downtown Winnetka. There's things happening here. I think it's a fun, fun accent. So obviously, it's going to be bid out, hopefully, and it's an option, but I keep in mind how far we've come along, and the discussions have not come up that intensely, so.
Yeah, well, the good news is, is that, you know, we have, we have a month plus to get a little bit more educated with it, and since it's an alternate, you know, the nice thing is, is that if we're still on the fence, I mean, you can kind of balance out the value of what the installation is versus what, you know, how much bang for the buck are we getting on that particular thing. So I think Steve did the right thing by making, by, you know, bidding it as an additive alternate. That way, we'll end up probably getting the best price on the base bid that we could, and then obviously the additives after that. And I think breaking it out is probably the right thing to do, given the fact that there is concern. I've got concern about it. So, but my only basis is what I've seen in Evanston, and that isn't over a roadway, and it's much lower and a different animal altogether, so.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it's a, at least in my opinion, I'm not against it. I'm just not sure exactly how it would look, and the poles are too big, what it looks like in the summer, in the daylight when the lights are hanging over. I just don't have a good perception of it, so I'm going to go to Wabatosa.
Go to Wabatosa.
We've got a restaurant. Is there a restaurant?
You fuel up the car, you get Jane with you, and you go out there for a perch fry on Friday night.
I've got an anniversary coming up, Chris.
And they've got, they have a great chocolate store.
Nothing beats a fish fry. Come on, Bob.
They have, they have some really good restaurants, and they've got a great chocolate store there, which we should actually bring, it's amazing.
Okay, we're getting off, we're getting off task here.
Yeah, let's get the chocolate store to come.
All right, I'd like to open this up for public comment at this point. Does anybody from the, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this issue? Jack?
Don't mean to jump the gun here, but, Jack Colodarchi on Cherry Street. I was looking at the height of the pedestrian lights out in the court, in Dwyer.
Moffitt Mall?
Dwyer, Moffitt, I'm sorry, Moffitt Mall. And I'm not, I don't know if those are 14-foot or if they're shorter. They look a little shorter than 14 feet. And I think that trying to keep those and the ones out here at the same height is important. I don't know if 14 feet's too tall. It strikes me that that would be a fairly large light. That's the first thing. And I sort of did a study driving back and forth from Chicago. Evanston has really, really tall lights along Sheridan Road, and then Willmet and Kennelworth seem to have roughly the same size, although I think Willmet's a little shorter. I'm sorry, a little taller than Kennelworth's. But they're pretty close, and I say those are close to a good size. So again, I don't, I didn't get out and measure them to see if they were 14 feet in Kennelworth and Willmet, but the lights in Evanston are way high. They're way out of scale, too. What would, I don't think we'd ever want to have that in downtown Winnetka. And the other thing I was thinking, too, with these festoon lights at the intersection, I think there's four of them, and I think each one's 20 feet. And then you have the road lights, which are 30 feet, and so you have the potential of having an awful lot of stuff at that intersection in terms of, you know, poles and lighting features right there. So I think it's something to consider. Thanks.
Thanks, Jack. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Hearing none. We'll close public comment. Any other comments or questions from council?
Time for a road trip to Wabatosa. I'm disappointed I'm going to miss them.
The only other major item is the color of the garbage cans. I'm way too busy.
Any chance to get north of that cheddar curtain, you'll take it, won't you, Scott?
Can we talk about those garbage can colors? I do think they should be green for recycling. It's not a big deal, but makes total sense.
I think it does make sense.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Too bad those are already lost.
So that's something you can tweak.
As long as it's Winnetka green, whatever that is.
Just to clarify, the recycling only would be green, but the garbage would be, trash would be black?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
That makes a lot of sense. It definitely does.
Yeah.
Okay. Just almost exactly 10 years ago tonight, Village Council sat and did not allow Steve to go out for bids. Remember that night, Steve?
Unfortunately.
Ooh.
And I am, I am dying to ask the question. So any other comments? Okay. May I have a motion to accept the 90% construction design plans and direct staff to solicit construction bids for the Phase One Streetscape and signage plan?
Salute.
Yeah.
And we'll take a roll call vote on this one.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Motion carries. What do you know? We'll at least have a bid.
Guys, somebody has to disagree with something. Too much unanimity.
Oh, we'll have our moments, trust me.
Thank you all very much.
I have a feeling they're coming sooner than you would think.
And it's nice to know, it's nice to know that...
Yeah, let's.
Okay, folks, we will now adjourn to swear in the newly elected council members and
call the new council to order.
And then I get to read.
Do you do your thing first?
Yeah, well, it has me doing the election results and then oath of office.
Okay.
Okay?
Here, listen up, everybody.
Next item is to report the election results from the April 2nd, 2019 consolidated election for village president for Christopher Rince. A total votes of 2,816 votes, 100% of the vote. Chris was duly elected. For trustee, Jack Colodarchi with 32.6% or 2,400 votes. Andrew Kreip, 33.66% of the votes with 2,478, and Robert Dearborn, 33.73% of the vote, 2,483 votes. Congratulations. Yes, you know. So it's time for oath of office.
It was all Maple Street.
Myself included.
There's a big voting block on that eastern front.
So there's a few of you that need to join me down here. All right, our tradition has been to do these one at a time. So, Mr. Village President, you're first.
Yes, we're not there.
Yeah, okay. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Christopher Rince.
I, Christopher Rince.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
Having been elected to the office of village president.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village president.
Of the office of village president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Need your sign. Okay, Mr. Dearborn. I, Robert Dearborn.
I, Robert Dearborn.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Rob.
I, Andrew Kreip.
I, Andrew Kreip.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the village of Winnetka.
The county of Cook.
County of Cook.
In the state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The office of village trustee.
The office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Mr. Coladarchi. Raise your right hand, please. I, Jack Coladarchi.
I, Jack Coladarchi.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
In the village of Winnetka.
In the village of Winnetka.
The county of Cook.
County of Cook.
In the state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The office of village trustee.
The office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Jack. All right. And we'll get your seat. It's time to, uh, put the seat down.
I guess next to Peter.
He just passed notes.
This is like detention.
It is, Scott.
You're moving.
Uh huh.
You gotta play music.
What's going on here?
Jack.
He's gonna keep you in line.
Well, now you're on the left, Dan. Now you're on the left. How'd that go again? I've been a Democrat my whole life, but. Okay. There was a seating, administer the oath. Okay, I'd like to now call the new council to order. And we'll move forward with item 11, ordinances and resolution. Resolution number R. 462019, Myers' commendation. This is up for adoption. And poor Scott has to have me read his commendation. I'll do my best, Scott, you know that. That's the first page. All right. Whereas Scott Myers has faithfully served the village of Winnetka as village trustee for four years from 2015 to 2019, serving as president pro tem from 2018 to 2019, and whereas Mr. Myers also served on the Downtown Master Plan Steering Committee and Streetscape Task Force, and prior to being elected trustee, he served Winnetka on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission. And whereas during his tenure on the village council, he served as the council's representative to the Business Community Development Commission and the Environmental and Forestry Commission and as liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Mr. Myers facilitated the village's goals of flood risk reduction by approving stormwater alternative study for the southwestern Winnetka, which delivered a final concept vision that improves Winnetka's stormwater detention and management capabilities. And he further advanced the village's stormwater objectives by approving a memorandum of understanding with the Cook County Forest Preserve for a stormwater wetlands project on forest preserve property. And whereas Mr. Myers exercised his due diligence to maintain Winnetka's infrastructure in the most cost-efficient manner by approving a water main study and an electric rate study, both of which culminated in the implementation of a sustainable funding for the village's infrastructure needs for many years into the future. And whereas he has helped to promote the interests of business community and the community at large by serving on the steering committee for the creation of first, of Winnetka's first downtown master plan and by voting to adopt a new plan as a component of the Winnetka 2020 Comprehensive Plan by approving a transit-oriented plan development and approving an implementation of Phase One of the Downtown Streetscape and Signage Master Plan and by contributing to a process to revise and improve the plan development ordinance and commercial zoning regulations. And whereas Mr. Myers demonstrated his commitment to improving the quality of life for residents and visitors by working tirelessly to schedule, plan, and organize the inaugural, inaugural Winnetka Music Festival in 2017, which has become a much anticipated annual event in the village. Whereas by listening attentively to public input and thoroughly considering the reports and studies prepared by advisory committees, consultants, and village staff, his commitment to transparent public process and his prudent deliberation of all matters of public policy what before the village council, Mr. Myers enhanced the deliberations of the governing body. Now therefore be it resolved that village council, on behalf of the village of Winnetka and village staff, commends Scott Myers for his unselfish dedication and donation of time, effort, and expertise to serving our community and extends to him a sincere appreciations for his contributions to this village. And be it further resolved that Scott Myers transmits this village greater and more beautiful than it was transmitted to him. Thank you, Scott. Before I can give you your, your goodie, uh, I'd like to have a motion to adopt resolution number R. 462019.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And then I will present Scott with a framed copy of the resolution.
Hopefully you'll have a few words for us, Scott.
Thanks, Chris.
So there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. I have a long list here of electrical changes for the music fest, Brian. We need to talk. Well, first of all, I, I think, uh, thank you very much for the resolution and, and I think, um, more than most trustees leaving the council, I've got, uh, a huge thank you to make to Rob, first of all, Rob and his staff, because I think that more than, more than most, uh, beyond just the, the questions that we all have of them around council business, I probably put more demands and more requests on them over the last, now, three years than, than anybody else. You know, anybody who questions whether Winnetka village government works or whether innovative, just, you know, needs to step into my shoes and think about coming to the village manager and say, hey, I got a great idea. We should close down the downtown, we should set up a music fest, we should allow beer and wine all over and this is gonna be a great success. And have the village manager go, yeah, I think that's a good idea. And, you know, from, from that day, you know, all the way through the first year and the second year and now the third year, uh, I have to, you know, thank Rob and, and every one of the team, because no matter what the request is, you know, we need, I don't know how many, what, probably 500 French barricades, you know, I need to, you know, I was saying facetiously to Brian, you know, I think every time Brian sees me, I have a new electrical request. Can we get electricity here or there? You know, whether it's Chief Hornstein and, and Chief Burkowski saying, hey, you know, we need, we need sprayers for the kids, 'cause it's gonna be 90 degrees out, or how do we make this thing safe? It was always yes. It was always, this is how we can do it, you know? And I'm not sure how many other villages you would have something like that and, and I think that that is something that, um, you know, without which, we wouldn't have the music festival. It wouldn't have been as successful and, and it wouldn't have been such a great community feel. You know, the fact that people wandered around and got to know the police officers and the fire, uh, department personnel, you know, it just added to the community. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a huge benefit to this village to have, you know, you, Rob, and your staff. And I think the music fest is just representative of that and I think that that's just, you know, been, uh, it, it's just a, a great asset that a lot of people in the village don't really see. And, and I think that's something that, that I want to thank, uh, thank you for. I appreciate the resolution, lots of, lots of points in there. I think the, the point though that I am maybe most proud of and, and even though Andy is staying on the board, I'm gonna call Andy out, uh, 'cause he was in the boat with me, that when we both started on the council four years ago, one of the things we said is we want to reestablish civility. You know, we, we feel that it's not just important to have civility between the council members, but it's important to have that civility and respect to the residents that come here and to the staff. And I think that that's something that, you know, I feel most proud of, that, you know, we've, I think, established a tone. And it's not just Andy and I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's now the council we have, you know, impaneled, that I think has really helped to, you know, create that new tone. And I, and hopefully that tone spreads beyond our usually empty chambers here and, uh, and has a broader impact on, on the community and that people feel that they can come here when they have questions or they have concerns or they have objections and that they'll be heard, that we'll listen, we'll discuss in a civil way and we'll come up with a, a rational answer. Because I think that that's clearly not something you see on the national stage and it's something that to maintain a community like ours, to maintain that community feel is incredibly important. And, and I guess, um, a final point is, I, you know, I think the importance of that civility is gonna be even greater in the future, right? We, we face challenges, right? We face some big infrastructure questions that still have to be addressed beyond just the downtown master plan. Um, and I think that, you know, one of the things that we saw recently is that the residents are very cautious about how we're gonna spend their money, how we're gonna propose to spend their money. I think that, that plus the fact that there's gonna be continual changes in how people shop and how people live and how people work means that we're, as a council, you as a council, are gonna have to continue to think about how do we make changes? How do we change the village without losing that sense of the village? And that civility and that respect and that sense of, um, not only personal integrity, but the integrity of the individuals who come before us, I think is gonna be critical to getting the village to understand and accept and, and adopt the changes that I think we all recognize have to be made. One final point I, I will make, I recently was out to dinner with a friend of ours who was getting close to retirement and, uh, and he said, you know, he, what he's looking forward to most in retirement is not having to go to meetings. And, you know, I think he was expecting me to kind of agree, you know, 'cause I was getting close to rolling off to say, oh my gosh, I can't believe, you know, I'm, I'm gonna not have to go to any meetings. But, but the point I made to him is the beauty of retirement is not not going to meetings, it's being able to pick the meetings you want to go to, to pick the things that where you want to be involved in issues that you can have an impact on, to deal with people that you respect, who have a mutual respect with you. And, and that's what I have to say I found on the village council. And, and I think, you know, my, my greatest disappointment is, you know, losing, is, is not having that opportunity, because I think over the last four years, you know, it's been very enjoyable to deal with people who have a great deal of integrity, a great deal of common sense of purpose in this village and, and a chance to, to impact something that I think we all love. But I know my wife is expecting me to be home on Tuesdays to help, help her, supervise her and, and make her life better through that supervision. So I will wrap it up by, by thanking Louie for allowing me to, to, to come hang out with all of you on Tuesday nights. So thank you, thank you all very much.
Okay, we can let the roast begin now.
Uh oh.
Would anybody like to offer up some words to Scott?
Can I jump in? I always have something to say.
We'll just work our way around from you.
Um, I, I just want to say what an honor and privilege it's been to sit next to you and, um, I just, I, I feel particularly fortunate because Louie's dad was a mentor to me when I served on the council the first time and it was just, it was, it was, he was always so great in terms of words of wisdom and, um, from his, his, you know, longtime residents in the, in the village and having been on the council and so forth and, and it was just so great to have, um, his advice and perspective and then to have the opportunity to serve with you. You know, I've known you for years, but to serve with you as a peer has just been, um, it's been terrific. So thank you for making us your post-retirement project. I, I will say that I've served, you know, on the council and school board and I've served a lot of, um, a lot of village residents and I have to say that the manner in which you've served the village has been tremendous. You have jumped in with both feet and you've really gotten so much accomplished with every assignment that you've had. And as Chris was reading through the resolution, you know, frequently the resolution is a recitation of stuff that happened when somebody happened to have been on the council, but all of this was stuff that you were actively involved in and really made, made happen. So I just want to say thank you so much, don't be a stranger and surely we can appoint him to something else, so.
I'm trying.
So I have the fewest number of years under Scott's tutelage here, so, but I so appreciate, Scott, how you helped me integrate myself into the board and, uh, and I, I also appreciate your style and how you're able to pull everyone's ideas together and help us find a sort of logical path forward and, and I hope that we can all step up and fill those shoes. I'm very intimidating sitting in your seat now, because there's no way that I can, you know, calm down enough to have that kind of, uh, wisdom that you have. Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe it was all the chair, but I don't think so. So I, I, I'm gonna be sad that you're no longer on the council, but, um, you know, I truly respect what you've done and I really appreciate the kinds of information and leadership that you were able to give to me. Thank you.
Well, I actually have some chicken scratch comments here, so I don't want to miss anything here. First off, and, and it's correct, we need to thank the person behind the person. Mrs. Myers over there. Louie, thank you for loaning him to the village for so long and for such a dedicated period of time. It's been great. Scott, first off, congratulations really on completing four years of, you know, exemplary service as trustee and then obviously many years before that. You should be very proud and everyone around here, um, is stating that and, and it's so true. You're a great friend, um, as well as just truly respected colleague of everyone with whom you've served. You're gonna be missed, of course. Now personally, um, one of the aspects of this, my first two years here that I've really enjoyed, has been having you next to me here. And no disrespect, however, um, I would always come to the meetings and I'd like to know what pair of socks that Scott Myers was wearing, because it would always put a smile on my face and if you look right now, he's got a classic pair on. So it just kind of makes him unique. I would say this, um, my suggestion would be that you mix and match them a little bit, because it kind of keeps a guy like me off balance, um, which I think is smart. So anyway, think about that, okay? Most importantly, I think that the qualities and Ann and Penny have mentioned a few of them that made you, that made you such a, a great friend and respected person out there, but also made you such an outstanding civil servant trustee, um, are numerous. And I would just, I listed a few that have been touched on and are so important, um, just in life generally, but I think you have great wisdom, you're steady, you're even-tempered, you're thoughtful, uh, you have a great sense of humor, uh, you're always prepared, balanced, you're willing to listen, you're wanting to understand other perspectives, um, you're seeking the right solution, to Ann's point, and you're respectful of others. And whether you're a trustee or doing anything in life professionally, civically, family-wise or whatever, those are just... whatever, those are just wonderful qualities, and you, you have them in spades. Up here, again, I always knew that you were prepared, and whenever there was a topic, no matter from the mundane to the more, um, more complicated, there was no doubt that everyone knew that you were prepared. We may not have shared the same perspective a few times, uh, on all issues, and, um, those were the only few occasions where you were just a little bit wrong on things, however, mostly correct, mostly correct, um, but I always knew that your positions were, were well thought out, and I think that is of such great value up here, and so, and it commands respect. So, it's, um, I'll just close up here, and I think that, that your colleagues up here and the residents out there always knew that your positions, you're reflected that, that deep understanding and thoughtfulness, they may not have agreed, but you came prepared, and I think that's, that's just so important for everything we do up here. Um, I know that we're all looking forward to working with Jack, um, I think Jack's going to be a fantastic trustee, um, however, uh, these are big shoes and fancy socks that are leaving this council. Um, they're hard to fill, you know, I'm going to personally miss you up here, I'm going to personally miss, uh, the presence and your input on the issues going forward, though I think you're going to be available for, um, solicitation if need be. Uh, again, great job, thanks for contributing in so many ways to making this village better today than when you came in. So, um, just a very impressive, impressive service to this village, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Well said. Bob, very well done. Now you're the new prepared guy.
Scott, you can count on it.
Scott, working with you has been great, learned a lot, thanks for all your work and dedication to the village, and I know there's always two minutes open at every meeting that you can share the podium with and hear your input, so, thank you.
I don't know whether I should thank you or not. I wouldn't be sitting here if it wasn't for you, Scott. Um, I, I wouldn't have decided to serve in the first place, I wouldn't have decided to continue serving, uh, the last time or this time if it wasn't for you, for your encouragement. Um, for those of you that don't recall, you know, four years ago, there were, or, or more than four years ago, there, there were a series of just kind of nasty meetings that I don't think represented our village well. And, um, I'm passionate about public service, it's something I believe in, but I also like living here, and I have four kids and a wife who people like, if they don't like me, they like her, and I, I didn't want to put myself in a situation where, oh my God, you know, I'm not going to be able to go to the grand, and, and, and the only thing that made me confident that it would be okay is having served with Scott on the zoning board for, for a couple of years, and, and knowing your approach, I, I felt confident that we both shared a respect for what people were saying, even the people that were yelling at each other, um, you know, you could, you could tell that, um, what people were looking for was to be heard, but more importantly, to be understood, and, and to, and not, not in a patronizing way, to be genuinely given the, the attention that they deserve, and, and so I, I knew joining the, the council with you, it was going to be okay. Uh, your leaving leaves a gap that we all have to fill, and, you know, I, I was thinking about, you know, and Bob is right, there's a wisdom there, and one, one of the things that I think contributes to that wisdom is, more than any of us, or more than any trustee I've seen, your first concern was never, I want to be heard, or I want my position to come across, that was never first and foremost on your mind, it was always, first, I want to understand what the hell you're saying, Andy, it doesn't make much, so you would try to understand, and, and you would do that with residents, you would do that with each of us, you know, so that when my mouth got ahead of my brain, or vice versa, I could count on you to sort of pull it together and, 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 and understand it. And, you know, even though there were times when we were on zoning and here where we maybe come from things from a different perspective, we almost inevitably met in the middle on almost everything, as far as I can remember, and, and, and I think that's our job, really, you know, uh, this isn't like a, a game where people vote for like, I want someone who represents this particular point of view and this point of view, and I go fight it, that's, that's not the job, you know, it's, it's, it's a neighborhood, it's a small town where people respect each other, they take care of each other, and, and so they deserve that respect, they deserve to be heard, and, and that's the example you set. So as much as you've done for the culture and energy in this village with the music fest, I think, um, I think it's far exceeded in terms of what you did for the culture of respect, and, and so we'll try to carry that forward, but thank you. Thank you for that part, for the, the other.
Uh, I, boy, you've made it tough on me, Scott, I, I've been, as the one who's only been on for five minutes, I can still say, we were on plan commission together, and then, um, in, in watching you and the whole council operate, uh, I, when I first started watching, I'm like going, oh, I am in such deep trouble here, because these people are super bright and prepared, and it's fast and intelligent, and it was a, the discourse was enjoyable to watch, and, and your part in acting as they described it as sort of a mediator at certain points and, and trying to, as Andy was saying, try to pull people out in terms of their, their understanding or their, their way of understanding things, um, was impressive, and I, I can hope that at some point I can do something half as good as you do at, at some point during my time on here. And I'm really in deep trouble because I have black socks, and I have white socks, and I don't, I'm going to need a list of socks. I'm just going to need a list of what your normal Rota is, so I can at least have some idea of what I should be doing, but thank you for your, your service, and I can only hope I do partially as good, so, thank you.
Well, thanks, Scott, I mean, you know, when I came on this council, came, returned to council with Penny, um, I'll never forget that first meeting and, and watching you and Andy in action, engaging with, with, uh, community members that were, would show up at the meeting, and, you know, having known what council had been like for the previous six years before that, and then to see, uh, the both of you working so hard and setting a different standard in the conversation, uh, really gave me a lot of comfort and helped, and really made me feel like I was joining a good team here, and thank goodness. Uh, things I'm going to miss about you, uh, you know, you were my Roberts Rules of Order over here, you know, I mean, and, and I know you would tolerate me for, for a certain amount of time, but, uh, uh, you know, I've never been one for the, for the formalized process, but I could always hear you over there going, motion, motion. Vote, no, roll call vote. So I would always hear, I would always hear you over there, and, and, you know, and, and sometimes, you know, really helped me stay on track and, and, uh, I appreciated that, it was just that gentle nudging. I don't think a lot of people in town here really understand how much you have put into the music fest, I mean, I was lucky enough to have been on the commission for the, you know, on, on the committee for the first couple of years, and, and, you know, I recognized just how, how hard you worked and how, you know, especially during the festival, I mean, you were here, there, everywhere, and I, I know you were counting steps one year, but it was amazing to me, the energy you put into it. And really what, what, what you recognized, Scott, wasn't that, oh, it would be cool to have music, what you recognized was that the community needed these sorts of things to come together and to become a community again, because we were so divided and split and isolated and siloed, and that bringing everybody together for something, to share something of a common interest and just enjoy each, each other's, uh, company, and begin to rebuild the pride in what it means to be a, a resident of this community. Uh, that music festival has done so much for how people identify with this town that, uh, I don't think people really understand what an impact it's had on just how cool it is to be a Winnetka resident now, uh, and thank you so much for that especially, and, uh, you know, I'm so, I'm glad to hear that you've got other ideas cooking in the background too, that will continue in that vein, to bring us together as a community and to share our, 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 our time together, and really create an environment that makes us proud to be part of this. Uh, you know, relative, must have been about a month ago, I, I remember going home, and usually when I go home, I'll, I'll take the dog for a walk after the council meeting, so I think all of us, you, you go home and you're kind of all wired up, right, and you just can't jump in bed, and you were sitting there one night, and I mentioned this to Rod the day after, and I heard you arguing a qualitative point of view, which just blew me away, because, you know, the one thing I could always count on you for is to bring things to the quantitative side, you know, how can we slice this, dice this, pare it down so that we understand it from a qualit, quantitative standpoint, and I always used to feel there was a, a good tension with those people that were thinking more qualitative, and then the one day it just came out that you were actually advocating for a qualitative aspect over a quantitative one. So I don't know if you caught my sickness, or, or if the music fest didn't, and maybe it was hanging out in those, in those party buses during the music fest that softened you up a little bit, I don't know, but, uh, it was really, it was really heartening to see that, and I always knew you had it, and I always knew you recognized it, and I think you also recognized your role with the council was to have that, that perspective, and it helped, because we always have to have this balance between the two, I mean, if, if we're always just on the, on the happy qualitative, soft stuff side, you know, it, it, it can lead to a road that, of, of a lot of bad decisions, because unless we bring it back to the, to the hard numbers and the, and the, uh, and the, and the quantitative analysis, you don't make good decisions, and so, you know, I always counted on you to be that yin to the yang in, in, in council, and, uh, certainly that's something I'm going to miss a lot, because I, I always knew that I didn't have to worry about that aspect, because you would bring it. Uh, that's why it kind of scared me when you went qualitative on me, because I'm like, uh-oh. But, uh, Scott, I'm going to miss you dearly, as you know, and, uh, I, I know we're not going to, we aren't going, it's not like you're going away or anything, but, uh, you know, certainly having you over here and, and, uh, help steering the ship is going to be something that's greatly missed, and thank you so much for your service and your continued willingness to give back to this community, so, appreciate it very much. Thanks. And how about another round for Scott? Okay, what's next, Scott?
Interpretive dance festival.
Oh, okay. Um, is there anybody from the public that would like to, uh, praise Scott's service? Every once in a while, anybody like to add anything on, okay. Come on up, Pat.
Pat Molsomo, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you so much, Scott, for all you've done for our community, and to, uh, support and, and bring on new ideas, because one of the things that the League stands for is a thriving business community, and you've certainly added to that, that's just one of the many, many things you've done. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks, Pat. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Uh, we're into another meeting, so new business, none, appointments, I do have, uh, committee appointments, uh, Rob will pass them out, do I have to read these, or?
Yeah.
I do. I'll ask the village clerk to read them.
Peter, does he need one? Okay, so council organization beginning May of 2019, President Pro Tem Andy Kreip, Warrants Jack Coladarchi, Chamber of Commerce Bob Dearborn, EFC Liaison Anne Wedner, Plan Commission John Swark, Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County is President Rince and myself, Northwest Municipal Conference Trustee Dearborn, Chris Rince and myself, Red Center Penny Lambier, Community Outreach Liaison Penny Lambier, Landmark Preservation Liaison Jack Coladarchi, Stormwater Infrastructure Liaisons Chris Rince and Andy Kreip, Downtown Master Plan Liaisons Chris Rince and John Swark, and Skokie Lagoons Gateway Liaison Anne Wedner. Do you just need a motion?
Thank you, so I, I need a, uh, motion to accept this.
So moved.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now's your last chance. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, there is no closed session tonight, and so we'll move to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned, thank you very much.